... President Byrne.
Here, we have a core president, everybody please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item is the American Legion. You guys want to say something tonight, or you're just here to say hello in the hall? Well, yeah, that's, yeah. You want to state, I know, obviously, we all know who you are, but John, do you want to state your name, please?
Good evening, my name's John Taylor, I'm the Senior Vice Commander for Vernon American Legion Post 1247 in Vernon Township in Vernon Hills.
You had a partner with you?
Past commander, this is Bill Wagner, who is one of our members and also a past commander for the post.
Okay.
As you all know, just this last weekend, the post ran a golf outing on Saturday as a fundraiser, and it was very well received and very well appreciated by all those who participated, played, and then a lot of other things. It was a good event, and we're very happy with it. We were successful. We received, over the course of putting it together, some significant help from a number of members of the village staff, so we'd like to acknowledge those people this evening with an American Legion Certificate of Appreciation. Mayor Roger Byrne, and one of our veterans bracelets.
Thank you.
Trustee Tom Cook. These are mostly due to whole sponsorships that people took out that we very much appreciate. Mark and Mary Beth Fleischauer. John and Marie Petrillo. Chief of Police Patrick Kreese. I don't think Jason's here. I'd like to acknowledge two people. One is trustee Schultz, one of our members, but also did a significant amount of help in helping us put the event together and carrying it out. Also, Jason Pablaki from the golf course. We were running an event like this for the first time, and the help he gave us can't be measured. It was tremendous. Very, very well done, and he kept us on track and helped us to put on a quality event. The other we have, I'll just mention, for fundraising coming up is Bingo, which starts October 3rd down at the golf course.
Usually it'll be Thursday nights?
Yeah, first Thursday of every month, October through, I'm not sure if it's March or April.
April.
But.
April.
April.
Okay.
Trustee Schultz, so if there's any questions I can answer as far as the Legion goes, be happy to. Otherwise, thank you all for your help and your support. Enables us to do the things for veterans and the community and other things that the American Legion gets involved in.
You're welcome, and I'm sure the second year you do it, it'll be, it'll be better.
Yeah. We learn by doing.
Well, yeah, no, yeah, yeah, yeah. You guys kind of threw the hat in the ring, what, 30 days at most?
Just about six weeks, yeah. We threw it together, so it's, we suffered, Bingo has, over the course of the years, that summer celebration been our prime source of fundraising during the year, and as we all know what happened with the weather, it was just a bombed out this year, so.
No cooperation.
Yeah, so this, this will help us tremendously in doing the things we need to do.
That's great. Oh, yeah, trustee Cook.
It was a great event. You guys did an excellent job running, especially first year, and I can attest, everybody had a great time. But my comment would be to staff, because we have in the past done some sort of a charity event every summer, and it's always part of our budget and that, and we did not this year, and as.
We did.
I know, but I mean, I just want to make sure that we, we publicly announce that we should be looking into this as, as maybe this will be the event that we, we work with to help sponsor and that, as, you know, at the golf course, because it was a good event, you know, it was a great day.
Everybody played, enjoyed it, and we had a lot of positive comments, so we're happy, the day we're happy, and we.
Plus, it was a beautiful day.
It was a good day for it, yeah, yeah, it's.
No, congratulations on your first one.
Thank you.
And good luck on Bingo. I'm sure you, you know, you got, you know, you had some good nights, didn't you? I mean, as far as body counts?
Yeah, yeah. A couple of bad nights with the really bad weather in January and February. People weren't going out, so it's just, that's the way it is.
Yeah, it, yeah. The end of January, the whole winter started, you know? Okay.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Okay, next is Greg's, what, is there any Greg's Parkway and Huntington Drive warrant analysis? Dave, are you taking this one?
Yes, sir. I'm going to be tag teaming this with Chief Kreese. Just want to thank everyone in the audience who is attending the meeting to learn more about Greg's Parkway and Huntington. There was a bicyclist car accident, so one of the things we want to do is try to share more details of what happened at the accident and what we're doing. Specifically, the agenda item today is we're asking the village board to move forward with a warrant analysis. We have engaged Civil Tech Engineering. They've already went out and started data collection in terms of the traffic data, but to move forward with the full warrant analysis and considerations of potential modifications, that requires board action, and so on the agenda is a discussion requesting the board to enter into a contract with Civil Tech Engineering in amount not to exceed $14,925. But before we get into asking the board to approve the contract, I thought it was important, we thought it was important, that some of the details of what happened comes forward, and Chief Kreese knows most, more of that detail than I, and certainly he's in a good position to address that.
Thank you. So I'd just like to provide the board and the audience a little bit of review, because I know sometimes people hear about tragedies like this traffic crash was, and maybe some of the details get lost. So basically, on September 5th, at about 3:00 in the afternoon, we had a terrible vehicle crash where a cyclist is southbound on Huntington approaching Greg's Parkway, a 13-year-old boy on the sidewalk. There are two cars traveling westbound on Greg's Parkway. The front car moves over to the right turn lane and slows to make the right turn. That driver sees the cyclist, that driver stops prior to the crosswalk and waves the cyclist across. The cyclist proceeds to cross in front of that vehicle, at which time the second vehicle, which is westbound, and the sightline between the cyclist and the second vehicle westbound now is screened by the stopped vehicle in the right turn lane. The westbound vehicle strikes the cyclist at roadway speed, causing this young boy significant injuries that he needed to be transported, and he continues to be treated for. The, the driver of that vehicle was, was cited as a result of the investigation, and simply put, you know, the analysis of this crash is there's three different human beings taking actions that converge at one moment in time that causes this crash is, is the simplest way to sum up that crash. I think it's helpful to look back at some other crashes we've had in the area, because a few of these stories have been commingled a little bit. The last significant crash involving a pedestrian that we had at that intersection was back in March of 2013. And although it's same intersection, slightly different configuration of circumstances, where a jogger is running southbound crossing the crosswalk from Huntington, and westbound traffic actually stopped for the driver, but in this case, it was a vehicle southbound on Huntington, turning left to go eastbound on Greg's Parkway, that struck the jogger as she's crossing the crosswalk. So that was the last significant pedestrian versus vehicle crash that occurred in March of 2013. I look back at more of the crash data, look back going to the beginning of 2015, so just over four and a half years worth of data, and I want to share with you some of the summary points of that. We've had one other injury crash at that intersection that was car versus car, and we've had 12 other property damage vehicle versus vehicle crashes at that intersection, essentially, in the last four and a half years. Along, if we look at all of Greg's Parkway, there's been 18 personal injury vehicle versus vehicle crashes over that span. That equals about four crashes a year leading to injuries, and we average about another 27 crashes a year, so roughly 30, 31 crashes a year on annual, all along the route of Greg's Parkway, looking back for those, that, that last almost five-year period. Couple other things I want to point out, I know many of you know this, but it helps sometimes to reemphasize that traffic enforcement and traffic safety is a key priority for the Vernon Hills Police Department. We make that a priority. Over the course of the last 12 months, our officers have conducted nearly 3,800 traffic stops throughout the community, and although the records are a little difficult to pinpoint exactly where a violation occurred and where the stop is made, we document that we've stopped about 170 traffic violators on Greg's Parkway during the last 12 months. The other thing I'd like to say about traffic enforcement is that we just recently, in August, were awarded a traffic enforcement grant through the Illinois Department of Transportation of about $40,000, and that mostly goes to hiring back police officers. So we've been authorized, over the course of the next 12 months, to have enforcement campaigns, over 450 hours of specific officer-directed traffic enforcement, just to go out and look for traffic violators, not to have any other assignment, and that's all paid through by grant funding. We had a smaller grant this year that we successfully completed, but we're locked and loaded to go again. And then the last thing I'd like to point out is, there have been some questions raised just about how pedestrian crossings are supposed to work, and maybe it's been a long time for most of us since we've been through driver's ed, and, and there was a change a number of years ago, and you've seen the stop, the pedestrian crossing signs have all changed. The law in Illinois requires for drivers to stop and yield for pedestrians in a crosswalk. Not to just yield, but to stop and yield. Specifically, this section is referred to as Drivers and Pedestrians Rights and Responsibilities, because the law puts some responsibilities on both parties at a crosswalk. For the driver has to stop, for a pedestrian crossing roadway, it goes on very specifically and talks about where they are, but we all understand, if you see a pedestrian and you can stop, you need to stop. For the pedestrian's responsibility, the law calls out that no pedestrian shall suddenly leave the curb or other safe place and walk or run into the path of a moving vehicle, which is so close as to constitute an immediate hazard. So I think it's just helpful while we're talking about it to remind everybody what the law expects of, of both parties in such a case. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Director Brown, and be happy to.
Can I ask you?
Of course.
A question, just relating to what you just talked about. What if it's a split road, such as right there where there's the median, is there an obligation to stop if, if they're on the other half of that, or?
So, here's a simple answer, is yes. What the, what the law actually provides specifically, I'll, I'll read this, that the driver shall stop and yield the right of way to a pedestrian crossing roadway within a crosswalk when the pedestrian is upon the half of the roadway upon which the vehicle is traveling, or when the pedestrian is approaching so closely from the opposite half of the roadway as to be know, as to be in danger. So technically, if, if you can see that you're approaching, and they're still on the other side of the roadway, and you can pass, technically, you're allowed to pass through. The advice we give everyone is if you see a pedestrian in the roadway, stop. If it's, if, if you can do so safely without being rear-ended, stop.
But what if, say they're heading, in that particular intersection, say the pedestrian's heading north, the driver's heading east, the pedestrian already reached the median and is then continuing.
Oh, they're, they're already passed.
Already passed, then you, you're not obligated to stop.
They don't have to stay stopped.
Correct.
That, that is correct. So if they've already crossed halfway, you don't have to stop, assuming you're, you're, you're clear that they are going the other way. Correct?
Yes.
Of course.
Thank you, Pat. So some of the questions that have come up over time is, you know, who has jurisdiction, who maintains the different items within Greg's Parkway, Huntington, and Lakeview. There's controlling documents, I'll get into more detail, but essentially, those roadways are local roadways maintained by the Village of Vernon Hills. Greg's Landing North Homeowners Association maintains the landscaping and also the irrigation system. And then people ask in terms of the county's involvement. The county has, by a three-party agreement between Zale, the county, and the village, they have rights in terms of any actions the villages looking to reduce the capacity and traffic flow on those roadways. So that's the unique differences of that. We've worked with the county before, asking questions of reduction of speed limits, are there improvements in terms of traffic, truck prohibition, speed tables, looking at pedestrian crossings, and what we can do. We work in concert with them. Specifically, I'll get into the controlling documents and why, why is the county involved? Essentially, back in 1996, the county looked at this development and how large this development was, and what an impact it was going to have on Lake County. They, they asked for water and sanitary sewer, if they're going to provide it, that certain conditions shall be done to protect the county and the regional transportation system, and so they dictated certain terms. You shall do this if you want our water and sanitary. The village board at that time pushed back. We looked at, the county's original request was five-lane cross-section for Greg's Parkway. So picture trying to cross Greg's Parkway with five lanes of traffic. There was to be a direct connection east-west, as linear as possible, between Butterfield Road and Milwaukee Avenue. The board at that time looked at different options. We looked at, can we do a land application of sanitary onto the golf course? We call it a shit spritzer, for what it's worth, but we looked at that, and having a well system. We pursued those things. Ultimately, we knew what we needed to do, we signed an agreement, and they also acquiesced and said that we could do a boulevard system. I'm so pleased the decision was made, that it's not five lanes of traffic, but it's a boulevard, it's got a median in the center. I think the larger issue is, they looked, we all looked in terms of what impact it would have. At that time, Gulf Road was four lanes. Route 60 also had problems with all the traffic signal, and, and how would we mitigate some of the traffic impact? So the agreement was forged. I won't hold up both books, but they're about this big, and the controlling document that the county and the village agreed to is the manual of uniform traffic control devices. So you need to meet warrants before you can put in stop signs, traffic signals, those things. I think the, the, the real issue is in terms of the county agreement is really in terms of, and I'll, I'll quote it in the preamble of the agreement. "The preamble to the agreement is clear, the county desires that Zale and Cuneo shall be responsible to limit and mitigate any undue adverse impacts that the Zale development and the future development and use of the Cuneo commercial properties might otherwise have on county roads and related facilities." Furthermore, the Huntington and Greg's Parkways to be designed and constructed to the satisfaction of the county engineer. Greg's Parkway and Huntington shall each have two through lanes that have a minimum posted speed limit of 30 miles per hour. The final engineering plans for these roadways shall, unless otherwise approved by the county engineer, incorporate and comply with the standards established by PACE for inner sub, inner suburban bus routes. This has been interpreted, interpreted previously, that truck traffic could not be prohibited. We also committed, the village agrees to prohibit and to adopt and maintain ordinances prohibiting any traffic control signs or regulations other than those warranted pursuant to this manual. So those are the rules which we, which we must follow, and so we've worked in a number of occasions. My, my compliments to Greg's Landing Homeowners Association, we work well with them in terms of the landscaping. I talked to Kevin the, over the spring, he was looking at different intersections, landscaping, what can be pulled back, and they reacted very well, and, and they've removed it, and we continue those conversations. Right after I heard that this accident occurred, immediately went over to LDOT's offices, met with them, and had discussions. They have a newer highway engineer, Shane. This agreement was, you know, over, it's 20 years old, so not everyone understands all the details and why. We're looking to engage them and talk about the agreement and what might, might happen, so.
Dave, we might have to change the names of the parties to the agreement, because Cuneo's dead, and so is Ed Zale.
Yes, sir.
God rest their souls.
Absolutely, absolutely. So how do we move forward? What, what are we doing? Again, we'll be requesting the board to enter into a contract with Civil Tech Engineering to look through the warrant studies. Some of the things that we've looked at before, and they will look at again, is one option, maintaining existing conditions. Could we remove the right turn lane going onto Huntington and just have a combined through and right turn lane? We did in 2017, add a pedestrian refuge barrier median, although it didn't, it, I feel for the kid. Although it didn't solve this specific issue, it has enhanced the safety substantially. Instead of crossing four lanes of traffic, one of them being a striped median, it is now a raised median. It allows people to cross two lanes of traffic to a safe area, and then cross one lane, so the distance of crossing is enhanced. In terms of people going south off of Huntington and going eastbound, they can't cut that corner because there's a median there. We added a light there also to illuminate the intersection. I think these have made a difference. Obviously, it's not going to solve every situation, but I think it has enhanced. So there's been a, a number of things we've done. We've looked at a number of different traffic impact studies, traffic signal warrants, stop sign warrants. We've looked at stop sign warrants on every intersection between Lakeview and Huntington, and they didn't meet warrants. We have to follow that per the agreement. Just wanted to share with everyone, we're, we are heavily focused on this issue. We'll continue to look at, we will have conversations after the report comes back, should the board approve this agreement, but we feel for the Lee family and what's happened to this boy. We wish him well, and we're laser-focused, so just wanted to share that.
And I'll just wrap up with one more comment that I, I forgot to make, that as is our practice, anytime there is a significant crash and, and we think we can make an impact, we directed what's called a traffic calming technique. There's been a lot of directed traffic patrols out there since this crash. We, we can only keep that up so long, because we have to then go and, and, and put, put those efforts on another intersection, but we've also deployed the speed display system out there as well. That also collects data that we're going to share with the engineering department, so they'll be able to take that into account, as well as what we get from the third-party engineer to see the type of speed data that we gather from that.
Question on, you said there was 100 and some traffic citations in the last 12 months?
170 traffic stops on Greg's in the last 12 months, yeah.
Do you keep track of where the folks lived?
No. No, we don't have a database of the residents of violators.
I'm just curious, is there a rule of thumb, local versus? Because it's my understanding that people that are getting tickets have indicated, well, I live there, why am I being stopped? I live here.
Yeah, well.
I mean, you know, there is a.
Yeah. I, I would suggest that, you know, the officers are observing traffic, making decisions based on the operation of a vehicle on a traffic stop, and then whether someone gets a citation or warning is a, a, you know, a discretionary decision that often is about the level of severity of the offense, and the understanding that the officer has, am I making, what level of impact do I have to make? So sometimes you have a borderline case, it's clear you're getting through to the violator, through the driver, that this is a serious matter, a warning's going to suffice. Other times, an officer feels that it's probably more important to issue a citation.
Trustee Tech, you.
So I got a couple of questions. So ideally, the best-case scenario would be a traffic light, right, if there were nothing to prevent it from occurring? I mean, assume dollars aren't an issue, I mean, is, would a stoplight or traffic signal be?
Yeah, the, the way I'd answer that is, the, the dollars are not the concern from anyone that I, I've heard. It's what would best improve the situation. So I'd like to defer the ultimate decision and allow the consultant to move forward in terms of which option. We do have details of the previous study, so we kind of understand what they've said before. Traffic signal is one of the options under consideration. Another one that we've talked about is potentially eliminating the right turn lane. So you're going westbound on Greg's Parkway, and you're turning right, right on Huntington, eliminating that right turn lane. Even a test case of, should the county allow this, of putting plastic bollards along that lane, so people can't turn right, and it would be combined in through and right turn lane.
Okay, I get that. But see, here's, here's my perspective on it, because these studies, until someone really gets severely hurt or killed, I mean, does that incline us to, you know, sort of prevent this from happening? That's number one. Number two, I understand with lights and stop signs, the flow of traffic, people will complain about, you know, taking too long to get through Greg's Landing, but again, that's stupid, as far as I'm concerned, because we want the flow of traffic. There's too many kids and people, you know, go crossing, you know, Greg's Landing. If anything, I would say, I drive it all the time, we want to slow it down. These crosswalks, the paint, I can't even see the paint, right? The paint is definitely not visible. What about the paint that lights up that they used to have on Butterfield Road as you approach, they would, it would blink? Something to alert these drivers, because, you know, people drive, they look at their phone, there's, I see too many people walking their dogs, kids trying to cross with their bikes. I, I would advocate slowing the traffic flow through Greg's Landing because of that. And also, what about the speed limit? Any way, can we reduce the speed limit? Because the way people drive, they think I can go 10 over and not get pulled over, so.
So.
Right?
It's third, correct?
It's third.
So the agreement is crystal clear, 30 miles an hour shall be the minimum speed. I guess in terms of the comment as far as how many people need to be impacted in the subdivision, I guess the way I would answer that is, I've been at that intersection so often in the last week, as I'm traveling to Worsen Court, so the subdivision immediately east there, I'm going to visit with a resident. As I'm driving along the local road, I see someone walking along, and they have their headset on and their phone on, and I'm driving along, and I just see. headset on and their phone on, and I'm driving along, and I just see this person is going to cross straight across the road, is paying no attention to me, and I'm turning right. I seen him coming, I predicted it, I halted, or I would have hit that person. And so, I guess what I would say is, we can make it safe, but to prevent every accident, similar to what I almost was faced with...
Right.
I don't know if I can eliminate it, and I can't commit to that.
Okay, I guess wrong choice of words, and, you know, just maybe, you know, like I said, you know, even the crosswalks, go take a look at the crosswalks. There, I can't see the paint, you know, they seem sort of washed out.
I concur with you. We do need to repaint the crosswalks. One of the situations in terms of crosswalks that we're faced with is, the irrigation system is coming out of Lake Charles. When they pull the, right after we paint those stripes, it's pulling algae and everything else, it's spraying from the irrigation system, and it's darkening that. But, I will commit to you, we need to spend more money on the crosswalks, whether it's Greg's Parkway, whether it's Deer Path, whether...
What are all over town. I mean, it's not just this road.
Absolutely, we'll do that.
I get...
Jesus, Deer Path is extremely busy.
Roger, I totally agree with you. I'm using that as an example, because I drive through it all the time. I just noticed these crosswalks are washed out, and, you know, again, so what about, remember on Butterfield where they used, that crosswalk used to...
Yes.
Yeah, I remember, it was across the Whitehall apartment.
Or something, I don't know.
So, Butterfield, so Butterfield Road crosswalk, when you walk up there, you hit a button, and the whole roadway would light up.
Right.
They pulled that for a variety of reasons. One reason was, they're about 50 pounds each of those devices that are subsurface, the snowplow hit it, and it would send it as a projectile, and so they pulled it because of that. And the other reason is specifically, well, that's exactly what they told me, Shane, he's the director of L.DOT, he told me that. The other thing I would say in terms of that is, when someone pressed the button, no one knew what to do. It's so new technology, people didn't know whether they should cross, they didn't know if they should stop, and I don't like confusion in crosswalks. That leads to...
And that is a five-lane cross-section there. You know, it's not the same width.
I'm driving, and that thing's flashing, I slow down, and it's kind of look, see if there's someone in there.
Yeah. I can only speak to what the county has told me for their reasoning, why they installed it, why they removed it, and their thoughts.
Okay.
I'm going to make one suggestion, and I don't know if this is something we can do in a quick manner. I had a conversation today with resident of, you know, Greg's Landing, and he said, what about putting up warning signs, you know, going east, going west on Greg's Parkway that would actually, you remember how we'd put up a stop sign and it flashes? You know, the flashing lights? Put up a sign there that does the same thing. It's not obnoxiously bright, but it certainly gets your attention, at least it'd get mine, and I only got one eye, you know? So, just to share. So, in essence, you know, if, what if we did that, because on the one, isn't there a curve when you're coming from the west?
Yes, sir.
To go, you're going east when you approach that intersection there? You know, so I don't know. That could be something now we could do. We don't need, we need a lot of permission on that.
We would not need permission with that.
Well, why don't we try that for now?
You're talking about the solar panel?
Nah, we used them at Lakeview Parkway and Greg's...
Were you talking about the flashing?
Yeah.
So, that requires a solar panel one. Do we have, we don't have those in stock, we'd have to order those.
We wouldn't have to order those, yeah.
Well, I'm just, you know, to help give the residents some peace of mind there, it's unfortunate that there's been...
Is that a sign, is that a sign that says, "Warning, crosswalk ahead"?
Oh, yeah.
Is that what you're looking at?
You definitely put some warning on it.
That has, that has lights around it, or?
Well, I think there's a couple of different ones. I'm listening in terms of this specific location. When you put, my goal is to have the driver's eye on the pedestrian, on the roadway. Sometimes, when you have those beacons, people are looking at the beacon and not the roadway. If we want to do that, by all means, we can add that, that's not a concern, we can get that done. That's just my own...
If you put it eastbound, if you put it before Royal Burke Dale, which would then be enough real driving time, then people might be confused that it's addressing Royal Burke Dale, and if you put it after Royal Burke Dale, it doesn't have a whole lot of value, because the stopping distance is not there.
Yeah, absolutely. The typical approach is to have an advanced warning sign. It's high-visibility line, and it tells them ahead of time of the intersection.
Yeah, and, you know, in essence, too, I mean, it's not a, there's radiuses along that whole road, that, obviously Greg's Parkway. Where I live is Deer Path, at least Sullivan is pretty straight. So, I mean, the sightlines are not, you know, you're there, you see who's coming, you see who don't. I mean, there's people coming around the radius in front of the firehouse, you know, going, going south, but in essence, you can see them, you know, off in the distance. And I walked across that a lot in the last few years with my grandkids at Green Vale and Deer Path, and people were, you know, were stopping. I mean, I wouldn't move until I saw somebody stopping, but a lot of people, most people stopped when they saw me with a little one, so. But, that's, this was different. This young boy was on a bike, you know? Was it an SUV that waved him on, and it was a big vehicle, and blah, 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 you know?
And I, and I think we're hitting on kind of the larger picture. There's so much distractions now with people texting, people on their phone. Behaviors have changed a lot, and I don't know if it's a campaign that we do to try to help with the education of things. I think that would also help.
I guarantee you, people's insurance on their autos are going up because of that, all the distractions that you, we got habit forming in your vehicle.
What's the fee structure for a cell phone violation?
You got to answer...
Cell phone violation is treated just like any other moving violation now, so...
Yeah, but what's the dollar value?
You're...
The fine?
You're paying, if you're paying on the ticket, is a $1.50. If you're paying, if you're going to court, you might avoid a conviction, but you're going to pay court fees, and so you could be at close to $300 to go to court on that ticket.
And lose? $300 if you lose?
Yes.
Yeah. Trustee Appenheim.
So, regarding the Civil Tech study, what is it that we're exactly looking for from them? I understand in order to get the warrant for stop signs, we need a new study, but it seems like, based on our earlier discussions, that's not really, not really quite as ideal for a number of reasons. And if it's not for the stop signs, do we still need the study based on the prior information? If we were going to choose between a lighted, between stoplights, or getting rid of the right turn lane? Because we already, we already sort of had their opinion from a few years ago. I'm not sure much is going to change.
Sure. For us to sit down and make changes and have the approval of the county, we need the new data, we need it put into a report in terms of the traffic signal and the stop sign, multi-way stop sign warrants, those are ones that require warrants. The other ones, it's given as data to tell how many vehicles per day are going in the various directions. Maybe to be more precise, the previous study for the always stop, westbound leading up to the intersection, there was 835 cars leading into that intersection, 435 of those took a right turn in one hour, in the peak hour afternoon. So, as part of those maneuvers, the discussion of having a three-way stop, the concern is, at that same peak hour, there were zero cars that were going along Greg's Parkway and taking a left on Huntington. So, if we considered a three-way stop, someone pulls up to the intersection, all 435 cars in the hour, and they look over, there are zero cars that are making the only conflicting maneuver. And at a certain point, they're wondering, why do I have to stop? So, that's the concern in terms of the stop sign warrant. In terms of the traffic signal warrant, it does meet warrants, and a traffic signal could be installed, and we could discuss that with L.DOT.
Right.
Is that the best option? So, that's why we want to pursue the other ones.
But, we already, so we already knew that it would meet warrants, and we still expect it would meet warrants. Do we have to have new data to give to the county if we wanted to do a stoplight?
We would not have to. It's just to look at those other options.
And will we have to have new data to get rid of the right turn lane?
We would have to give them supporting data to show how it would impact traffic flow, so yes.
So, we would need new data, not just the old data?
We would, yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, Trustee Cook.
Dave, in the past, we've talked about, because one of the reasons I.DOT has these warrants, and that is that, correct me if I'm wrong, unwarranted signs create a problem with a false sense of security. Doesn't it also create, you know, liability problems and that, too? Because, and if you blew through an unwarranted sign, you were talking about going to court, you would beat that if it didn't meet warrants, correct?
Yeah, not only could you potentially beat it, but the real challenge with putting up a stop sign or any other traffic control device that isn't warranted is that the public figures that out, and they lose respect for those traffic control devices, and they feel more empowered to violate them. And so, and that means the next stop sign, they, you know, it's a bad idea to put stop signs at places that don't make sense, because people will violate them. And the more people violate them, the more crashes you have. And yes, I think there could be some liability on the village if we put signs without, without the proper justification, and that sign contributes to a crash where someone gets hurt. I can't say for certain, but I would be, I'd be concerned about that.
Yeah, I'm also concerned about the one I.DOT representative, the one time talked about the, the false sense of security, both for, not just pedestrians, but especially pedestrians, but also for other autos, that they're assuming you're going to stop.
You know, the rules, the regulations, you know, I mean, if people make mistakes, people are distracted, you know, people are, you know, having a conversation, there are cars, there's a lot of reasons why, you know, any accident occurs, and with a motor vehicle, you know, you could be as attentive as hell, but somebody stops suddenly in front of you, you know, or cuts, like, who drives the tollway? The tollway's like, you know, the start of the Indy 500, you know? It's, it's, it's like, you know, cars weaving in and out, you know, and it's crazy, you got to pay attention.
Well, we should just go ahead and do this study.
Yeah, let's get this going.
And get the right, whatever's the right thing to do, get it put in there ASAP.
Also, just one other point to try to back up Dave and the need for new data. When the traffic counts were done last time, they were done in 2017, which was either just before or right after Menards opened, Aldi's wasn't there, and Melody Farms was not open yet. I think we may have significantly increased the amount of traffic that goes through Greg's Parkway by opening up those. And also, in terms of the unwarranted stop signs, probably the best example I could give you is the front of almost any shopping center, where they put a stop sign in front of every store with the idea of slowing cars down. How many people do you see, don't slow down, don't even stop at those stop signs and completely ignore them?
Well, if the store's vacant.
I don't think that's written in the rule, but...
I draw a line.
So, it's just a couple of points. I think we would be in much better standing if we do the traffic counts and get accurate data based on the conditions of the village and the traffic flow at this time.
My only point was, if the only purpose was for a stop sign, which I have a feeling the majority of us are not really in favor of, then it's not worth spending the money, and let's just use the old data and make our decision based on that. Because we already have basically all of the suggestions and the advantages and disadvantages, you know, of between a stop light, a roundabout, or getting rid of the right turn.
Well, the roundabout was rejected, wasn't it?
That was at Lakeview.
Was that Lakeview and Greg's Parkway only?
Yeah.
No, wait.
So, the, a roundabout was something in the report for Huntington, and is something we would consider?
Yep, is that, yeah.
Whenever we, whenever a traffic signal is installed, we always want to look and see whether or not a roundabout would be as efficient and effective.
But, you'd still have to have stop, you know, state signs stopping for pedestrians.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, what we need is, you need a motion to approve hiring Civil Tech Engineering to do this study, not to exceed 14,025?
Yes, sir.
So may.
Second, could we put an addendum on there to put up these warning signs for now?
Well, we don't need that.
Oh, we don't need, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that, though?
Yeah, we can just do that, yeah.
All right, there's a motion, and who's the second?
I'll give it to David.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Markarth?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Appenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, are there any citizens that wish to address the board tonight? Sure.
Hello, my name is Timothy Knuckles. I live at 229 Alexandria in Deer Path. I'm here as a representative and a sitting board member on SRA CLC Foundation Board. We came over a situation over the summer, where we're getting ready for our annual Tree Festival coming up in November. The company that gave us, or donated the trees that we decorate and auction off, had a bad situation. Essentially, they ordered hundreds, if not thousands, of trees from China, paid to have them shipped, and the manufacturer in China kept the money, and this company is no longer. So, we are out trees. That said, I just wanted to hand out a couple of invitations to the board members. I don't have enough for everyone, but obviously, take a look at it, and hopefully, we can maybe work out a situation to help out local SRA CLC.
Tim, could you take a moment to explain what that organization does for the audience?
Thanks.
Give mine to Mark, and that way, he can make a copy of it and include it in the transmittal that we'll all see, all the staff will see.
SRA CLC is the local, spaced out in Vernon Hills right here, but we, essentially, we work with special needs. We work with the social and sports activities, as well as running Special Olympics. Anywhere from four years old up to adults, we have close to 400, if not more, active members. I am a part-time staff as well, I'm a program leader. But, outside of that, any other questions? This invitation is for you guys, hopefully, you would be able to join us. Typically, we went to White Deer Run, but this festival actually got too big for White Deer Run. We have a waiting list, so we're actually doing it this year at Double Door, or Double Tree over here in Mundeline. The facility is a lot bigger, so we could actually get some more bodies in there.
Did you see the stones at Double Door?
Double Tree.
No, I know, Double Door.
Double Door, I love that place, yeah. I used to go there a lot.
Yeah, that's a, that's a famous place.
Would Five Trees help you?
We would, Five Trees would be awesome. We typically, we...
I've got four four-footers and one five-footer.
Uh, we...
In the box.
We would... We would, we would definitely, we would really appreciate a donation like that. Typically, we do a seven footer, and then we do some five footers, and then we do a grand tree as well. And then, obviously, we were looking for a grand donator, but there are other options or other sponsorships that we would definitely consider taking as well.
Have you gone to any of the home improvement stores?
Yes, I mean, that's our next stop. I, like I said, this is, this is something that we need to make a move on now. It's, we have to have something in place by the end of October.
Well, we could certainly help you on, you know, on all our communication outlets.
How many trees are you looking for?
Anywhere between eight to 10.
Oh, is that...
Yes.
Eight to 10 trees.
We got four from Schultz.
What's the cost of these trees?
We were doing pretty high-end trees. Typically, they retail at around $250 each.
And then you auction these off?
We decorate them, and then we auction them off.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a big money grabber for us. Typically, we, we need this money for buses and other, and other, you know, it just helps us along.
Okay. So you need 2,500. Have you approached the Park District as well? We could probably talk to them.
The Park District is a, is a sitting member with our SRA CLC, so I don't know if we're at leisure to talk to the Park District. That's why I'm here.
Really? Okay.
Well, staff, Mark, do what you can to get the word out on this.
That's not an issue. We'll be in contact, Tim.
Thank you.
We'll be in contact, and we'll have you in, and we'll do whatever we can to give you a hand.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Those five, I thought were Hobby Lobby, so hit them up.
Five, huh?
Well, I was gonna use them in front of the house up north, but the wife said, no, you're not planting a plastic tree in front of the house. I said, well, I don't have to...
You have trees up north?
Well, the deer eat them, that's the problem. They don't eat the plastic trees.
Short needle find.
Okay, all right. Okay. Anybody else? Yeah. You, I know, I recognize...
Yes, you do. Good evening, Mayor.
In your names...
Scott Ellis, 1861 Sawgrass. Real quick question. Back when Menards and Aldi and everything was being planned and the discussions, I believe there had been a study, and there was a warrant approved for a stoplight at Greg's in Lakeview?
Yes, sir.
What happened to it?
We started moving forward with that. We wanted to get out in front of Menards to start with when we were engaging our consultant. Ultimately, Menards got approved for their signal. We thought it was best to first have that signal and then do more counts, but we also listened to the community, and there was a lot of uproar in terms of a traffic signal being in a residential area. We listened, we took a step back and said, when residents are ready for that, we would move forward. But it was strongly discouraged not to install one there. Are you supportive of it?
Well...
What's your thought?
I don't know what the best answer is, but I'm sure you've been out there in the mornings when traffic on Greg's Parkway is almost impossible to get out of certain subdivisions, and, you know, luckily, there aren't a lot of people trying to cross the crosswalk at that time, except people walking their dogs. But something needs to be done, because one of the, I think it was the village manager, said, "Traffic on Greg's Parkway has gotten exponentially worse since, as each development has happened, whether it was Menards or Aldi's or now Melody Farms." Something needs to give, because it's become the alternate street for 60. I think Chief Police would say that, too. I mean, I see your officers on the street all the time now. And I don't think it's a speed issue with the danger. Somebody mentioned texting and everything else. There is so much distracted driving. I'm petrified driving at times, but I look in my rearview mirror and see, and it doesn't matter whether it's a teenager or the adult, looking down like that. So I think the stoplight might work. I don't know the answer, but I don't know if it can be included again in the study that you're doing now, or if it is part of it, that whole stretch.
Yeah, I can answer that. So the warrant analysis, preliminary studies, it showed there'd be a substantial benefit for a traffic signal to be installed there, to be connected to Menards, to be connected to Milwaukee Avenue.
It's just the resident thing now.
Some of the discussions, and I'd love to hear community feedback on it, was the more that we improve those intersections, the more we're drawing people off of 60 and Gulf Road, and so there's a balancing in the discussion.
Okay.
And wasn't there some discussion about the proximity of those lights to houses, and therefore, you know, extra light into your bedroom at night?
Absolutely. You're right. There would be additional lights, and then with a traffic signal, there'd be more people stopping and accelerating, and the noise was a concern for the people who lived in that surrounding area. So that's the background on it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that was a concern several people that live right there expressed to me was it.
Well, I think the HOA expressed that.
Yes.
Right, Dan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can I ask, what's your, even before we get the study, what's your feeling right now in terms of lights and other things?
The new president.
For the record, my name's Kevin Borg. I live at 1871 Turtle Bay, and I also am the president of the Greg's Landing North Homeowners Association, which represents 1,305 lots. At our meeting last week, we had the largest turnout that we have had since developer turnover. And almost everyone there was to talk about, you know, the traffic accident and traffic on, basically, safety. Now, the one thing that was pointed out, what Dave and Chief Chris Crease pointed out, was a good breakdown of everything that the village has done. With the new signs of the crosswalk, that helps. The refuge barrier, that helps. They added the lights, that helps. Dave and I have been working together trimming all of the landscaping obstructions to make sure that you can see, because that's one thing the HOA can do, is make sure that you can see every crosswalk, see every turning movement. And there was a few places where it got a little, it's maturing, we had to clear it out. But the overwhelming number of people that spoke, now, it's not everybody, there's obviously differences of opinion. The vast majority of people would prefer a stop sign. They do not want a stop light. And the other idea that was brought up, what, they brought up the one with the bright lights, and that doesn't work. But at, in front of Rustoleum, they have a beacon. It doesn't light up the street, but there is a light there. Maybe that's a little bit like your idea. And so, those were, well, the majority of the people at the meeting wanted a stop sign, not a stop light. This particular accident, had there been a stop sign there, probably wouldn't have happened, because the car would have stopped. It doesn't mean all accidents would have, you know, been prevented, but maybe that one. And then, you know, looking into either your warning sign or a beacon, they have just a little bit more, and we definitely don't want stop signs on all of the roads, nor would Lake County give us that. It's just, this one intersection make it a little bit more likely for you.
Isn't there a concern, though, that that will increase traffic coming southbound from Huntington, because now the other eastbound and westbound traffic has to stop?
Yeah, we looked into that. It's like everything in traffic, it's a plus and a minus.
Right.
If everyone is coming from, like, down Greg's Parkway, heading east from mostly Mundeline, coming down, you know, Allinson Road, and they have to stop, there might be a few less people that cut through there. But if everyone stops at Huntington, then it makes it a little bit easier. Right now, you back up at Huntington, it takes a long time to turn left. So if you can alternate, which is like Lakeview, then there might be a little bit more traffic at Huntington, but then probably a little bit less on Greg's Parkway. So probably depends where you live, which one you're, you know, more for. I think the most important thing, which is what everyone's looking at, is safety. What is the most safe thing to do?
And so, well, probably the most safe thing would be to put a light in, a stoplight, because you have to...
Well, I'm not sure I buy into that, but I know that that has been said.
Well, because the concern, as Dave pointed out before, was that people roll through, if there's no one coming from the other direction, then they'll learn to ignore that. But if it's a light, it's always a light, and you gotta...
No, that's true. People are more apt to...
Are more apt to stop at a light.
To stop at a light than they are a stop sign.
Certainly hope so.
Well, you would hope so.
But a rolling stop as a stop sign is still, even though I agree, you don't want to put stop signs where they're completely unwarranted, because people will ignore them. But a rolling stop as a stop sign is still better than not stopping at all. And right now, most of the people would turn right. They know the only people who turn left on to make the turning movement that Dave says hardly ever occurs, is if you live in Turtle Bay and you want to go to Butterfield, that's the shortest way. All the other neighborhoods want to either go out the other way. That's only 23 homes. That's why there's hardly anyone that makes a movement. I happen to be one that does, but no one turns right really slows down. With a stop sign, even if it's a rolling stop, it's at least slower.
Well, let's get the study going.
Yeah, and I thank you for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
If I could, Don Cather, 627 Sycamore Street. To put a finer point on what Kevin said, the folks that came to the HOA meeting that were concerned about traffic safety, primarily were concerned about pedestrian safety as opposed to vehicular accidents. I mean, that's a concern. You don't want crashes, particularly crashes where people are injured. But by and large, their focus was, on the heels of this horrific accident, safety, pedestrian safety trying to cross. So I would just encourage us to, when we think about safety, to think about those things that make sense from a pedestrian crossing standpoint. Because even if you've got the T-intersection, the three-way stop controlled by a light signal, you've still got traffic moving at any given point in time. And if someone is standing curbside, they're looking around saying, which car is coming from which direction, and when can I run? You've still got an element of risk. So I, you look puzzled.
Yeah, are you suggesting if we put a stoplight in?
No, 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 no. I'm saying that the primary concern for safety from the residents that showed up at our meeting was pedestrian safety. So I would think that the eye should be, and the focus should be on not only vehicular safety, but primarily pedestrian safety. And I'm not sure that folks are convinced that a stop light, and this is something we can discuss going forward while we wait for the results of Civil Tech to come through, but I'm not sure that a signalized T-intersection necessarily creates that safe environment for a pedestrian crossing the street, because there's always, there's either a car turning left, southbound on Huntington, turning left to go eastbound on Greg's.
But wouldn't there be a pedestrian crosswalk light, so that they would know when to walk?
Yeah.
So the pedestrians would obey that light, and then...
Only if you delayed Huntington.
Right, well, we would delay Huntington when someone hits the button.
Yeah.
Which is a rare occasion.
I still tend to think that one of the, one of the things that would pay a maximum benefit is something, anything, those things that raise the level of awareness of drivers. That's why Trustee Takaka mentioned about, you know, the lighted pathway across the road. And I understand that the county plowed Butterfield and may have had concerns about tearing up the pavement. We, the village, plows Greg's Parkway, not the county, though. So to that extent, we do have control over, I mean, you can set the plows four inches off the pavement, or you can drag them till they spark on the ground. Your blades, you know, you have the ability to do that. And I'm not saying that I've got all the answers, but I'm saying there's, there's a lot of things to consider. And I don't think that we've hit on the one best solution yet, and that's why I want to keep continuing the discussion and look forward to that. Thank you.
Okay.
And just a thought in terms of the traffic signal. Absolutely, we would have a push-button for pedestrians, and so there'd be their ability to cross. The other thing that traffic signals do is for everywhere along Greg's Parkway, it creates a gap. Stop signs meter the intersection, so you have a car go, a car go. So it's metering where there's a constant flow of traffic, where it's proven that a traffic signal, there's a delay, it creates a gap. That gap creates a better situation for crossing in other areas than those major intersections.
Do you think, will Civil Tech address that, do you think, in their report, that it might actually be more dangerous to put a stop sign in for sawgrass crossing and some of the other areas?
They have affirmatively said that in the previous studies in terms of Huntington, and they will concur on those other locations, too. We've actually done stop sign warrants at all of the other intersections along, too, that they don't meet the warrants. But yes, Civil Tech will look at that.
Okay. And what about, back to those in-ground lights, I proposed that months ago or years ago when we were putting that in. Do we have any, any actual studies that we've looked at from those? I know, I know the Butterfield issue, but can we go back to the companies? Because there might even be better products that aren't 50 pounds, now that they have LED lights and everything else. That didn't seem like...
So maybe what we're discussing is not the in-road ones, but there might be some other options, and we will look at that. But in terms of our snowplows and the county's snowplows, they both will launch these things similar. We do need to get our blades onto the surface. It will hit those, and it's 50 pounds that are flying towards someone who potentially is walking along there. So that may not be the solution, but there might be other products that we will look at. And we'll do that.
Yeah, I'd like to look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We have to move on. All right. Next is, in this, you know, going, staying with the safety theme, National Railroad Safety Week, September 22nd to the 29th, 2019. 2,214 rail-grade crossing collisions resulted in 819 personal injuries and responsible for 270 fatalities in the United States in 2018. 1,050 trespassing incidents have occurred in the United States, resulting in 571 pedestrians being killed and another 479 injured while trespassing on railroad property rights of way. Education, educating and information the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad right of ways are private property enhances public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail-grade crossings. Ensuring pedestrians and motors are looking and listening while near railways. And obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of fatalities and injuries. The International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation of Lifesaver United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at national level, at a national level, all aspects of railroad safety, to enforce applicable laws in support of National Rail Safety Week. It is hereby proclaimed, September 22nd through the 28th, is National Rail Safety Week in Vernon Hills. Accordingly, our citizens are encouraged to recognize the importance of rail safety. I guess we got a prime example of rail safety at Route 45, just, I guess, northwest of Deer Path with the delineators, the paddles, you know, which kind of prevents people hopefully from going around the gates, you know? That's why those are there, so. Okay. Next is special board meeting. Manager Fleschauer?
Just a reminder, there's a special board meeting to allow resident input on the issue of whether or not to allow the retail sales of marijuana in Vernon Hills. Will be held next Tuesday, September 24th, at 7:00 PM at the Vernon Hills High School on Lakeview Parkway in the Studio Theater.
Okay. Assistant Village Manager Petrillo?
Good evening. I would like to take this opportunity to remind everyone that Vernon Hills Fall Fest is coming up, September 28th and the 29th at the Vernon Hills Metro Station. And here is your lineup. On Saturday, starting at 12:00 PM, there's going to be gift bags for the first 300 kids. We're going to have over 700 pumpkins for kids to paint while they last. We're going to have inflatables for kids to play on. We're going to have inflatables for kids to play on. There's going to be great food brought to us by Hits Pizza. There's going to be a beer tent, including Mickey Finn's Oktoberfest Brew being available. And at 5:00 PM, our raffle starts. And I would just like to say thanks to the many great Vernon Hills businesses who have donated so much to make this event special. And I also heard about, uh, Mr. Knuckles and, uh, you know, his situation. And I can assure you, Mr. Knuckles, uh, Bears Fit chipped in, uh, and gave us many great donations such as this 100th anniversary sweetness jersey. And, uh, I promise you, staff and the board are going to make sure that you get a couple for your silent auction and I see in many other things as well. So we're going to put the same energy into helping you that we're doing for this, uh, this event as well. Right now, we've selected over 70 items, uh, just for this Midwest Veterans Closet. I'd like to remind the community that this event is about helping our community and, uh, the great work that Mary Carmody does up in North Chicago, serving homeless veterans and their families and those that are at risk. Transitioning over to the music, uh, we know that's always a special, uh, part of each event. And we selected a Vernon Hills band. Uh, we have a resident named Jason Mick, lives in Deer Path, and I hear he's got a great band. He's performed at the Arbor Theater, he's performed at Beerhead, Six Flags, and he is ready to take his band and rock, uh, Fall Fest for us starting at 5 o'clock. At 7:30, we've got five guys named Mo, and they're going to rock us into the evening. On Sunday, Bears Fit will be hosting a second day. And it's going to be a Chicago Bears pre-game tailgate style of party right here in Vernon Hills. This party starts at 11 o'clock. There's going to be more children's activities, a craft show, pizza from Hits. There's going to be a veterans theme. You're going to see veterans such as Jim Schultz serving food and serving beer. The American Legion's going to be there, and we're going to have whiskey tasting by Three Rangers Whiskey. This is going to be a great tailgate. We're going to have A to Z entertainment with the music. And Mark Palmieri from Bears Fit is going to fire the crowd up, leading us into our Bears game against the Vikings in the afternoon. And just maybe, there's going to be a few footballs thrown around. So I'd like to say thanks to the board for hosting this event and allowing us to have, uh, the cultural partners and everybody. The business community, uh, offer their financial support to helping out, uh, the Midwest Veterans Closet. I'd like to say thank you to the business community for all the donations that we received to date. Over 70 with still two weeks to go, and these are some great prizes. Uh, I'd like to thank the entire community for coming out and rallying around, uh, this effort of the Midwest Veterans Closet. And in advance, I'd like to say thanks to, uh, Chief Crease and the police officers who are going to be on-site, providing onsite traffic control and security. And thanks to Dave Brown and all the great men and women from the Public Works, uh, crew, who, uh, always do an exceptional job of setting up and, uh, making sure it's a, just a clean, safe, uh, maintenance-free event. So come party with us, come party with your friends and family. Let's celebrate, community, that's September 28th and 29th. Thank you.
All right, Jen, thank you. Next is, uh, let's see. Chief, Chief of Police, Commander, uh, Halyubets?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a, a moment to announce to the, uh, uh, community that one of our very own, uh, Commander Shannon Halyubets has been selected by the International Association of Chiefs of Police, uh, the largest, um, professional, uh, law enforcement organization in the world. Uh, Shannon has been recognized with an award called 40 Under 40. And this award represents, um, the top rising leaders from around the globe, ex- exemplifying leadership, dedication, and service to their communities and in the law enforcement profession. So, uh, we're fortunate that this year, the IACP Conference is actually being held over five days in Chicago. And, um, I'll be joining Shannon at the awarty, uh, breakfast. And he'll be recognized as, uh, with this very prestigious, uh, uh, award. He's the, the only, uh, law enforcement official from, uh, our, our state and one of the few from the Midwest. And this is worldwide, so we're very proud of him. It was, uh, an honor for us at the Police Department to nominate him for this recognition.
That's great. Congratulations to Sean.
Yeah.
Shannon.
Shannon, yes.
Sean's my son-in-law.
Congratulations.
Yeah, great, yeah.
Surviving you.
Yeah, surviving, surviving me, yeah, he gets a bonus point for that. So, uh, okay. And no other reports other than on this vote agenda, is there a motion to approve items A?
Through G.
Through G.
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Trusty Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trusty Takoka.
Aye.
Trusty Schultz.
Aye.
Trusty Markwart.
Aye.
Trusty Cook.
Aye.
Trusty Brown. President Byrne.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Is there any unfinished or additional business? Is there any new business or communications? Uh, is there a motion to adjourn to go into the committee to hold?
Do we have a closed session tonight?
Are we, are we going in closed session?
Yes, sir, we're going in closed session, be very brief, to discuss personnel pursuant to Section 2C1 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act.
Okay. So there's a motion?
Motion to that effect.
Okay.
Adjourn to a committee to hold and close session at the end of committee to hold.
Motion to adjourn this meeting, closed session after the committee to hold.
Correct. And no business to be done after we come out of closed session.
And who's the second? Trusty Markwart? Okay, uh, all indicate by saying aye.
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 Any nays? The ayes have it. Okay, the meeting's adjourned. I'd like to call the committee to hold meeting order. And, uh, the first item is approval of the committee to hold meeting minutes of September 3rd, 2019. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, comments, questions, deletions, corrections? If not, roll call.
Trusty Brown. Trusty Schultz.
Aye.
Trusty Cook.
Aye.
Trusty Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trusty Markwart.
Aye.
Trusty Takoka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, parking and traffic enforcement at New Century Town number two.
I can take that one, Mayor. Um, the village has been approached by residents of New Century Town, uh, Town House Association number two in regards to ongoing parking and traffic concerns. Uh, specifically, um, when parents are picking up their kids at the school there. Uh, they affect Windsor, Webster, and Hughes, the streets of the, uh, Town Home Association, by parking there, leaving their cars there, and walking to the school to get their kids. Um, they've posted signs there, but they're not enforceable by the Police Department because we need to adopt an agreement and ordinance allowing the Police Department to enforce traffic and parking regulations on the private streets there. And it's, uh, our intent, if, uh, the COW would allow us to draft an agreement and work with council on that and present it to you so that we're able to enforce that.
Trust, Trusty Cook.
Um, NCT number two is the one on the east side of Aspen, right?
Yes, sir.
It goes, it's bordered by Aspen and then Hawthorne Parkway.
Correct, and between Hawthorne Parkway and...
Um, which streets back in there are private and are there any in there that are public?
I think some work needs to be done with, uh, council. We're trying to, uh, determine exactly which streets homeowners association two has. Windsor for sure, um, and, and that's the major problem, but there's some ancillary roads on there as well.
Well, I just wanted to make sure we double check which ones, because I know when we did the, the dedication of the streets up there, some associations, all of the main streets became public and only the, the little cul-de-sacs were kept. But then there are some like the one I live in where they're all private streets, so...
And at your direction, we'll do that for you and present that to you.
Yeah, and, and whatever, whatever they want us to enforce, I have no problem with that because I know we have an agreement in our association too that enforces some of our parking regulations and, and, and it wouldn't be able to be enforced without that agreement. So whatever they're looking for, I'm, I'm fine with.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll attach a map to that agreement that delineates the streets very clearly that are going to be enforced and regulated by the Police Department.
Yeah, because when, when we did that dedication, there were a, a number. I mean, some places, it was almost every street became public, and then there were others where no streets became public. At, at that time, a lot of it had to do with on-street parking, so...
We have a, we have a really good file system, um, we'll be able to help.
Okay, so we need a motion on it? Or not?
Motion to direct staff to create the necessary, to do the required review, analysis, and communication, and draft the necessary ordinance to, uh, allow us to enter into a, an agreement for enforcement.
Second.
Motion is second. Uh, no further questions, roll call.
Trusty Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trusty Brown. Trusty Markwart.
Aye.
Trusty Takoka.
Aye.
Trusty Cook.
Aye.
Trusty Schultz.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Anybody here from Menards? Okay, I'm going to step up. And identify yourself, please.
Good evening, Nick Brenner, 5101 Menard Drive, Eau Claire, Wisconsin.
Okay. All right, so this is a request from Menards to amend ordinance 2000, 2014 dash 029, approving of site plan landscaping and architectural changes at 860 North Milwaukee Avenue. Who's taking this?
Uh, I could take this, Mr. Mayor. Um, on the screen in front of you, uh, is the site plan that shows, uh, to your left in red, uh, the area where the gatehouse would be expanded. Um, this expansion is something that Menards is taking place on a nationwide basis. In the upper right-hand corner is what the existing gatehouse looks like right now. It has two lanes, uh, and the way it operates is a, a guard there will check your receipt before you go in and also check, uh, what materials you've collected before you go out. What Menards is trying to do is to improve efficiencies by adding an additional lane where you'd have two lanes that go in. Uh, and this next slide shows, uh, what the gatehouse would look like. The expansion would be to the south, to the left. Uh, again, in the upper right-hand side is what it would look like from the outside. This would allow Menards, um, to have two inbound lanes and one outbound lane. Uh, the, uh, the middle inbound lane would be deliveries that would, uh, function the way it currently does. A guard would, uh, have to, uh, see your receipt or your documentation before you're allowed in. Uh, the lane to the right, uh, would be more for customers that have ordered material online or they've ordered in the store and they have their receipt. They can simply scan the receipt at that lane and move into the lumberyard more efficiently to collect their items. In either case, the guard would still have to check you, uh, before you're allowed to leave, uh, the yard. So as you stated, ordinance 2014 dash 029 approved the original development for Menards, including the gatehouse. Uh, so for Menards, uh, so if the board thinks that this expansion is appropriate, staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance, amending ordinance 2014 dash 029, approving site plan changes, landscape changes, uh, and architectural, uh, changes. Uh, also, additional signage is shown on the, uh, screen in front of you in accordance with the plans that are in front of you and also in accordance with the conditions that are attached to your packet. And I or a representative from Menards can answer any questions that you might have.
Any comments or questions from the board? Just, or, yes, staff, is there any reason not to approve this?
No, we, we think the request is, uh, is appropriate. Uh, the, the materials match the addition. Uh, it'll improve efficiencies moving in and out, uh, but we have no objection to the request as proposed. We, we have no issues.
Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
I'm just wondering, why is everyone looking at me?
I'm deferring, I'm deferring to your...
I'm not, I made the motion.
I just, I, I did it. Doctor, I did a general glance down here that could have been picked up by anybody.
Let, let the record show, I glanced nowhere.
I'm, I'm, I'll let the record show, I'm perfectly fine with this.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
He did.
We got a second?
Motion to direct staff to create the necessary ordinance and agreements to make the, uh, allow for the above changes.
Yeah, my glance was just a simple professional deference.
Okay, uh, all, all in the, if the... All in favor indicate aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I said aye too. The ayes have it, go forward.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay. All right. Now we have, uh, Vernon Hills Athletic Complex Sports Turf Proposal.
Thank you, Mayor Byrne. Uh, we have representatives of the Vernon Hills Soccer Club and Sports Made Personal here. Uh, they're proposing to assist in the enhancements to the V-hack. Uh, more specifically, sports turf fields, uh, on fields 10 through 12. Uh, they'll be converted from, uh, three fields into two fields, but there's flexibility. And we've checked with the different users and they're supportive of this. Um, included in your packets, a proposal from Byrne and Jones Construction. Um, they're a member of the Tips Cooperative, which does, uh, uh, cooperative purchasing. It's how we had the Musco lighting installed. Um, so it's a cooperative purchasing program and they've already been vetted. Um, this would be more of a design build where they would move forward with the engineering design and, uh, also construct. So included are some business terms, uh, and, uh, let's see, project costs of 1,483,000, which includes turf and stabilization of the subgrade. Um, there is some work, uh, some additional items that, uh, need to be considered. Uh, damage to the pass system is estimated 15 to 25,000 dollars. That would be something that the, uh, village would absorb, um, as part of, uh, this proposal. And there's some additional project costs to consider. Um, do we want perimeter fencing? We think the number in the board packet, we can work on that number, um, in addition to soccer safety netting. We don't know about whether additional drainage pipe, uh, roughly eight, uh, 18,000 dollars, whether or not that's needed, we would only know as part of, once we got into the engineering, uh, design. And we do understand that there is a irrigation system going along the north edge, um, that I just learned from my, uh, talking to my staff, that would have to be reworked. So, um, something that we need to consider. But specifically, the financing is included in your packet. Uh, uh, Sports Made Personal would contribute 900,000. Uh, the Soccer Club would contribute 300,000, and the Park District, uh, is contributing 75,000. The request would be that the village would contribute 208,000 dollars and finance the upfront costs. Uh, the Vernon Hills Soccer Club and Sports Made Personal would be paying, uh, 10% annually over 10 years, but the village would be the one who is, uh, financing the project upfront. Maintenance is included in the proposal for eight years, and in the last two years, uh, it would be, uh, prorated, but it does include eight years of, uh, maintenance as part of this. So, um, what, what is staff asking for? We're not, we're not, we're asking for some general direction on this. Do we agree that we should move forward? Certainly, we have to have more discussions in terms of the business terms and, uh, spend some time with our attorney just reviewing their proposal also. So with that, I will turn it over to you.
That's me. Peter Kent.
Wait, 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 where are we getting all the money for? I know it's paid off over 10 years, but we have to finance it upfront?
The proposal would be that we would finance it upfront. Uh, then, uh, on an annual basis, they would pay for it over 10 years.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't, I don't particularly agree with financing it upfront, us, you know?
I don't.
I'll let it...
Let me ask you a question. So you, you have a proposal here that's 86% funded. Um, we have some other, you know, there's some other things in the works regarding, you know, funding of this project, so, that you're aware of, I believe, Roger.
Oh, I got it in front.
Yeah, exactly, so, um, yeah.
Okay.
I think we should listen to their presentation and, you know, I think there's a lot of merit behind it because anyone who comes with, you know...
But where are we going to get it upfront? We're going to bind it out? Ian?
Ian?
What did you say?
She hasn't looked at it.
I haven't looked at it.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, Peter Kent, 259 East Baltus Row.
Yeah, so, Peter Kent, 259 East Baltus Row. This is a project that the Vernon Hills Soccer Club has been interested in since our inception, about 11 years. Myself with Andrew Reback and Kevin Atkinson, we ran the soccer club as volunteers for this community, never taken a dime. We've been the directors of the club, which is at a for-profit club, usually an $80,000 a year position. We've coached numerous teams, which coaches in this area make $8,000 to $10,000 per team. We put all that money into savings to work on this project. Similar to how we did, I think it was about five years ago, we came to the Park District with a plan to install more lights at V-HAC over these fields, 10, 11, and 12. We had a similar proposal that we couldn't pay it all upfront, but over... at that time, it was a three-year term. We could do it. We made good on our commitment. We hit the commitment all the time and now those lights are there for everybody's use in the community. Vernon Hills is falling a little bit behind even though we have the most wonderful sports complex in the area. If you're familiar with the other sports complexes, specifically on the North Shore, they all have field turf. Our seasons are starting later because we can't get out onto our fields and we can't go as long. With field turf covering this 200,000 square foot area, we'd be able to start earlier, play longer. We wouldn't have the numerous cancellations that we have every week due to the weather issues. And it could be a beautiful day, but similar to like last week, how much rain we got, there were great evenings, we couldn't play. That's tough on the community. The players in the community look to other clubs in the area and look to leave. Having the field turf will also enhance our tournaments and special events. A lot of clubs from out of town want the... want the security if they're traveling out of town that if the fields take on a lot of water, they can still have their games. And this past Chicago Cup, we had teams from as far as Arizona playing 250 teams, something like that. So, we came up with a plan. Again, it's about 85, 86% of the funding that we think is a good proposal to get this done and better our community.
Trustee Schultz.
I don't see any room for spectators or stands between the fields or at the far right-hand side. That seems kind of problematic. And can... if we reduced the space to just what's required, could we save the money there and reduce the village's contribution here? And finally, I see there's a representative of the high school, although I don't know if he's in that capacity or just as a private citizen. But has anyone talked to the high school about potentially using these fields also and making a contribution from their large war chest that they've accumulated over the years? So, those are my... And my fourth question is, can you...
I'm gonna remember them all, but go ahead.
Can you guarantee that the material utilized to stabilize each of the blades is going to be 100% carcinogenic-free?
Okay, I will start with your first question about the spectators. Based on the layout we have, it covers a lot of teams for practices and the trainings. For games, if you have games running simultaneous on both the large fields, you can have it on the... spectators on the far side of each one. Yes, there's probably not enough room on the layout that it's showing here in the middle, but that's where the teams can sit. They have one bench, coach walking there. Spectators for youth soccer events are only on one side anyways, so we'd have them on the far east side and the far west side. So, I don't see that as a concern. Brian, if you want to discuss, we have talked with the high school. To my knowledge, there will not be a contribution. I can't... I can't give you any more information than that.
Maybe we should talk to them again.
Yeah.
And that, I mean, us, you know?
Yep. And then, with the layout we had, we thought it fit perfectly in terms of that additional space. That's gonna be all practice area as well. So, we'll have goals facing toward the east and that's a lot more room for more practices. We don't... teams don't need full fields, half fields, all the time for their trainings. Sometimes they just need a 40 by 40 area and that's how this layout was set up for us. So, we can get numerous teams, even the ones that will still practice and train on the grass when it's available. If the... if the fields aren't available, then we'll bring them back onto the turf and just condense a little bit.
Well, you could get eight teams onto the field, back-to-back at midfield and then at the two ends.
Yeah, we can get a lot of teams on that large space.
Look at reducing the coverage area and reducing the overall cost and hopefully reducing the village's contribution.
I think if we take that area away, it's a little bit of dead space because it then comes up to the football field. So, I understand what you're saying about reducing the cost, but I think in the long term, this would be the smarter option.
This utilizes at the footprint of the lights that we went into. So, as Peter said, there's lots of different variations. This is the, you know, AMAP, but...
How many...
We have the recreational teams out there. We go sideways for a 77 or the small 3D3s. So, those on the turf are much easier to set up.
Well, how many lacrosse games can be played?
How many?
On these fields, any?
Oh, you definitely can play them.
Well, I mean, isn't it...
I don't know the size of it, but...
Well, you guys are wanting to put in $900,000 towards it?
SMP is putting in $100,000 towards it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But, so, okay, so these can double as the lacrosse fields, are we talking?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, how many... Okay, how many lacrosse games can go on simultaneously on the way it's laid out now?
Three.
Okay, three. Alright, really?
So, lacrosse plays 50 to 55 yards wide. Soccer you're seeing here is about 72 yards, 74 yards wide.
By 120?
By 100... in this, I think you're looking at close to that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, you can get three games?
Which is why you see the extended space because it allows for three large fields and the minute you cut it off, you're limited to. And so, it's a drawing-related... The white lines are there for a symbolic representation.
Okay, so the large green area that's not lined, that would be used when there's lacrosse going on?
Correct.
And warm up when a soccer game's going on, yeah.
I mean, right now, if you were to go out there on an evening, Monday through Thursday, we use all of the green space there, the two that are lined as well as the one that's unlocked.
So, but where do... would the spectator seats go? You know, is that just bring your lawn chair?
Yeah, I mean, like it is now on the east side.
I mean, you know, I'm not saying it's bad, I mean, it's...
But that's all it is and that's what it is typically for youth soccer and also for lacrosse.
We don't have any benches out there today over the past 10 years, so...
I wanted to clarify, we asked Brian to come in case there were any questions because obviously the high school has two turf fields. They have the baseball field, they have the football field. So, if there were any questions around turf as a whole, we thought Brian would be a good resource for anyone.
And Trustee Schultz is referencing the black puff that comes up?
Yes, yeah. Well, the old... the original materials where they've had this preponderance of especially goalies coming down with a variety of cancers because the material used was ground-up truck tires, automobile tires, which when ground up, release carcinogens. And I'm assuming there's newer materials out there.
Of course, and I think that is really the reason why we asked Brian to come because we do have two field turf fields in Vernon Hills at the V-HAC. And so, they're there, right? So, this has been proven. That is... I understand the concern, that is the old concern going forward.
And it was a study that we've all read. But I respectfully don't believe that study was ever truly proven. And thus, why you see field turf all over the country.
Trustee Schultz, if I could help also. We knew that was a concern previously of yours. They did include a EPA report of all the different materials, et cetera. It was, you know, 70, 80 pages, so I didn't include it in the board packet, but there is a report that I could share.
Dave, I want to ask you a question. This goes to the whole cost thing here. So, this grass, let's say nothing was ever done here. Would this grass ever need to be replaced or redone or...
It's a very good point. You may recall, the fields were built in 2001. So, 19 years old. Usually like Rustoleum field, it loses its crown. This... these fields, we've never really taken out of play. They received a lot of feet on it. And we will need to consider regrading into the future. I don't know if that's three years or if it's five years, but it's coming.
Okay. What's the cost ballpark on doing something like that? Let me ask you this, is it more than $208,000?
It is much more than $208,000.
I mean, that's pretty much then that's...
Mr. President, if I could, I just have something to add, sorry. In regards to the $208,000, keep this in mind, in January of this year, the board signed an intergovernmental agreement with the soccer group to lease the fields to them for the three tournaments that they conduct each year to the tune of $25,000 a year. That $25,000 was to be used to offset the maintenance on those fields for the time and the use of those fields. I've talked with Dave and his staff and it's estimated the annual cost of maintaining those fields is somewhere in the range of $40,000, give or take, depending on the season. If the board was to consider this proposal, my recommendation would be to maybe reconsider or renegotiate the agreement and use the $25,000 that they were to pay us for the maintenance on those fields to be put back into this project, resulting in a net sum loss to us. Yeah, net sum loss to us and we would have fields that could be used 10 months out of the year. And we would save all the maintenance costs on those fields moving forward.
Well, but isn't that agreement for the entire... covers really the entire area? So, those areas that are still in grass?
True, some of them though, that's why I say you're talking a $25,000 commitment and it's about $40,000 for the maintenance. So, we were already prepared to do that because other groups do use those fields as well.
Trustee Cook.
First of all, I think we should do whatever we can to go forward with this. Having spent the last couple summers traveling around with travel baseball following my grandson, all of the major venues that are hosting tournaments now, especially in the Midwest, now that we've become subtropical here, they're turning their fields to this field turf because you have to guarantee playability. And the problem, I mean, guaranteeing this is playability would both reduce our maintenance. Our maintenance costs go to virtually nothing because, as correct me if I'm wrong, the contractor would maintain this, you know, so our maintenance cost of this space goes down to zero. And you gain so much in playability and can bring in those kind of tournaments that then bring in all the additional revenues to the community at the restaurants and at the hotels and everything else that we do. It just... it's something that we should begin looking at overall phasing to try and do as much field turf on the whole V-HAC, as much as we can on the V-HAC. Because I'm serious, this summer, we seldom played on any grass fields anymore. Almost none of the tournaments and most of the schools now have gone to field turf for their main or major playing fields. Even some of the park districts where we went, where they had big tournaments, they had converted their main playing fields to field turf just because it was easier, better maintenance, better playability. I mean, all, everything made it the right thing to do. And so, I think we should work this out however we can to get this done.
Well, it's not without precedent, us participating. And... The high school knows this. Mr. McDonald knows this from, "We built the football stadium. We gave the school the $1.6 million." I believe that was the magic number. And then, yeah, oh, yeah, Rustoleum gave him $100, yeah, for the naming rights. Okay, great. But, and we were paid back over, I don't know how long. I mean, it wasn't terribly long, we were paid back. So, in this instance here, I guess it's just, we gotta step away from the curve. How do we structure this whole deal then? You know, so, because we're basically, we're bonding it out. Or we take... because we're not gonna take it at a, you know, the surplus, are we?
At this point, I don't know. What staff is seeking...
Yeah, out of reserves, not surplus, but reserves, yeah.
Probably reserves. What staff is requesting is similar to any other development project that came before the board for concept approvals. If you're okay with the idea in general, as has been expressed here today, we'd be asking for your consensus to move forward with digging into the details. Let us work on this, let us answer the questions that you've raised. There's a few other questions that we have that need to be answered as well. We've met with our... discussed this with our village attorney. He has some questions that need to be answered. And if we can, again, if we can get your uh-huh on this to move forward and discuss it further, we'd like to flesh it out, bring it back for a formal proposal for approval.
That's okay, just so long as it, you know, makes sense to us financially.
Just like any other development, we have permission to move forward, but it's not a guarantee.
Is there gonna be interest on this, kind of loan?
That's a question, what's the security for repayment? What are the default remedies?
Because this guy's a for-profit organization.
Correct.
Lacrosse America.
Right? You for-profit?
Yes.
Okay, all three of you, right?
No, 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 we're...
Oh, you're the two... you're other father. Alright, yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, that was a long... I used to do that a long time ago. Okay, so he's the only guy with... that's gonna financially benefit. Yeah, okay. But he's putting a lot of money into it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's the guarantees we...
And the beauty of this is, is this is truly an intergovernmental cooperative venture.
Oh, my God, we do that all the time.
And it feels good.
Yes, yeah, sometimes, yeah. Okay, alright, well, I don't think there's anybody against looking into this and trying to figure it out, okay? Oh, you still wanna talk? Okay, Mike, Trustee Markwart.
I'm for it. In my earlier life, I have been a coach, I've been a teacher. The astroturf would be a benefit. Just to give you an idea, I did two with V-HAC. I will state this, it cost the village 250... excuse me, over $250,000 for the operations of that. The village pays for that. The residents don't pay for it, the village pays for that. And strongly in that fact, that's a point of our giving to this community. Youth is a big factor. I'm all in on all this. I know we have to discuss some of the things that involve with the financing, but by all means, times have changed. A field is gonna be destroyed with one weekend. With this astroturf, it can be used all the time. And yes, we have to jump in the times that happen now. So, I am definitely all for this. We have to work out some of the bugs, but this is a yes in this seat.
Yeah, and I think also, you gotta, you know, go turn the clock back, what we invested in that whole V-HAC there, okay? The village and our 53 acres, okay? And it was probably well over $10 million to get what you see there today. Now, adding what we're gonna add here, obviously, is significant. Now adding what we're gonna add here, obviously, is significant, so. And, but it's turned out to be a wonderful complex. And I'm glad you guys are doing what you're doing because we all had, is Mike and I and Schultz probably, we all had to go to Libertyville, Libertyville Boys Club soccer and there was no lacrosse, but you know?
I mean, we worked.
And we were sometimes looked upon as, you know, we were the interlopers, okay? So, yeah, the, the V-HAC is a great.
A lot of volunteer hours to raise this money for the community.
Yeah, yeah. All right, guys, I mean, oh, Dr. Appen.
Yeah, I would just like to not only concur, but applaud all of you for, for this proposal. I know you've worked a long time, not only on this, but in developing the fantastic program that it is. I do have one question. I know there was some issue about benefit in terms of the timing of it. The sooner, if we can get it in this fall, then there, there was some benefit that you would receive and I just wanted to make sure that, that that was recognized in terms of the timing of, of our investigations here. We don't push it off too long. What, do you know what that is at this point?
I think the benefit of that was not large enough to move quickly enough, so some of these other things have to be resolved. Our, our hope is to start it in February so that we can complete it by May first, so we would move our April off of there and go to Deer Path, go to other places. It's a three-month project from the start of digging, which they can do when it's cold, but they can't put the turf down until, you know, forty-five or fifty, so the turf would be late in April.
So there, there is honestly the potential that, I guess if it's fifty, hopefully it won't, it won't be till June, but, but it could push things back based on weather that we've had.
It could, but we have.
So you do have contingency plans.
Contingencies, if, you know, again.
You might lose the whole.
We can already move a month, but what if it drags out? We have contingencies to make sure these kids are playing, training.
Well, and the quality of field turf over the last few years has become significantly better than it ever was ever before. Maybe we could.
If you lose a game, you didn't wanna play on field turf because it didn't roll like, like grass.
Right.
But now it's so much better than just about any.
Well, that was the thing that amazed me the most about the baseball fields was that it reacted more like grass than in the old days when it was reacted like you were playing on an asphalt parking lot. The ball reacted more like it was in grass.
Yeah, and just one comment from a tournament perspective is to continue to recruit teams into Vernon Hills, they need a guaranteed play. And so what we end up doing now is actually reserving turf fields all over the area in case it rains to take the hotel staying teams offsite so they can still get games in. And it's becoming a hindrance of recruiting to some degree because we have to have them travel fairly far to get to turf. So, you know, you're not flying in a team from Arizona to come in that if we get rain, they're SOL. Right?
Yeah, maybe someday somebody can convince the Bears to change theirs to turf, so they don't have the worst field in the league.
Actually, I thought they were talking about it, the only thing was with the fire now going in and if the fire blesses your, the new turf materials. That, that in fact might give the impetus to the Bears.
First of all, they have cancers, they gotta worry about burn holes. You know, not, you know?
No, you're right.
They can repair a spot.
So do you need a motion on this or is this just consensus that you got? I think it's just a consensus. Okay.
All right, well, we have a consensus. You know, I'm in, I'm in. You know, and it sounds like the rest of the board is and, so we'll try to figure it out, okay? And I don't know, how, how long do we need to take to get to where we can, you know, wrap our arms around the financing end of it?
Hopefully, the end.
Probably be a few, few weeks.
I would say hopefully the second meeting in October.
Okay. All right.
You guys have an attorney you're working with that I, I can deal with?
Sure.
You do, okay.
Well, we know you do that.
Not necessary, I could work with one, I could work with one of you.
Cheers.
Ten years.
Okay, all right, guys, thank you. Okay, all right. Is there a motion to adjourn or go into closed session to discuss personnel?
So may I? Second.
All, all indicate by saying aye?
Do a roll call, Mr. President?
Oh, you wanna do an aye?
Roll call for executive.
Oh, for this one? Okay.
Thanks.
Roll call. One time I was gonna, another time I was gonna do an aye. Okay, go ahead, roll call.
Trustee Takao.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye. Motion carries, the committee, the hold is adjourned and we're going to closed session and we won't come in out, we won't be coming out to discuss any additional business or take action on anything.
Dave, Mr. Brown.